All right, I call back to order our meeting of the SAC City School Board on Thursday, August 7. All right, do we have any announcements from closed session? I'm sorry, S. Pledge of Allegiance, thank you for the reminder. All right, all stand for our pledge of allegiance. Madam Superintendent. I believe we now get to welcome our new student board member, and I have somewhere in all my pages, a wonderful little bio that I get to read. So Maggie Kemper will be joining us on the stage. She is an incoming senior at West Campus High School, who has spent most of her days at the School of Engineering and Sciences. Beyond the classroom, Maggie is deeply involved in her community, whether it's researching data for SCUSD Student Advisory Council, or advocating for the unhoused community within the Catalyst Youth Collective. She's everywhere, all at once. Known for her passion in connecting with others and in amplifying student voices, she's committed to building stronger bridges across the district. As the 25, 26 school year student board member, she helps to push for youth perspectives and foster a more inclusive, student-centered environment. Maggie, please come join us on the dais. And we're going to put you to work right away. If you can read aloud this statement for us.
Got you. This meeting of the Sacramento City Unified School District is recorded. The recording will be cable cast on Metro Cable Channel 14, a local government affairs channel on the Comcast and DirecTV U-verse cable system. The recording will also be closed captioned and video streamed at metro14live.saccounty.gov. Today's meeting will place Monday, August 11 at 12:00 p.m. and Thursday, August 14 at 6:00 p.m. on Metro Cable Channel 14. Once posted, the recording of this meeting can be viewed on demand at youtube.com/metrocable14. We welcome all members of the audience to address the board. Please complete, uh, sorry, complete a speaker form which are located at the back of the room and give them to our communications representative, along with any handout you have for the board prior to the conclusion of the item's presentation. Please speak into the microphone when addressing the board and state your name for the record. Please limit comments during public comment to items that are not on the agenda. If you do comment on an item that is on the agenda, we ask that you please defer your comments until your item comes up on the agenda. Please also either turn off your cell phones or place them on silent mode. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Oh, there we go. Thank you very much. All right, and now, do we have any announcements of what took place in closed session?
We do, Vice President Jean. There are two announcements coming out of closed session this evening. First, the board approved a settlement agreement related to OAH case number 2025030917 by a vote of six to zero with President Singh absent, and the second announcement will come from your superintendent.
Thank you. I am pleased to announce that the board approved the following appointment. By a vote of six to zero with board member Singh absent, the board approved the appointment of Patricia Carrillo as principal at Woodbine Elementary School.
All right, I will take a motion to adopt our agenda.
I'll second.
Excellent. All in favor?
Aye.
All right, we'll move on to public comment. Do we have any public comment this evening?
We do. We have four speakers for public comments, actually five. We have, do we have Kelly Charis? Is she here? Kelly has three cards, and I assume one for herself, so that would be four, is that correct? Yes, no? Yes? Okay, so eight minutes for Kelly, and then we also have Katie Jelks, followed by Terrence Gladney.
So I'm here with Monica Harvey, and we just wanted to talk about a couple of items that have, something that we've been dealing in terms of the staffing crisis surrounding speech therapists for our district, as well as some recruitment efforts that have been made. I'm excited to announce that we are starting this year with eight new SLPs directly working for the district, which is very exciting. We had three, I think two last year, and so a total of 10 in the last two years. I don't know of any other year, at least in the five years that I've been with the district, that we've brought in that many, five of which are new graduates. And unfortunately, with degree conferrals and other things that are happening at the university level, with staffing shortages happening then, they have not been given a start date yet, and we were really hopeful that they'd be able to start the school year at their new sites, so that not only the site admin knows that, hey, you know, we are staffed, we are trying to staff the schools, especially our MTSS proof-of-concept sites. And so that is just something that we've kind of been running into, but not for lack of effort. The two of us have been really working hard to try and get as many of those positions filled, as well as our union.
So, that's our first question. We didn't see any of those names on the personnel transactions for this school board meeting. Some of them were interviewed in the spring. We wanted to know why there's no one on the personnel transactions. The second question has to do with Agenda Item 8.1Q. That was on the agenda last board meeting as 8.1V. It was on the consent agenda for the last board meeting in June, June 26, and so I was wondering why it is now on today's.
The, the, the last thing we wanted to talk about was the SELPA Plan, the local plan. And on page E414 in the annual plan, it, there's a question that says, is the SELPA's average SLP caseload greater than 55? And we would have to say, yes, it is, and, but it's marked no. So by contract, our, our caseload is not greater, but in actuality, it is greater.
Next speaker, Katie Jels, Jelks, Jels, and then Terrence Gladney.
Good afternoon, members of the board and Superintendent Allen. My name is Katie Jels, and I'm one of the principals at PS7 Elementary School, and I just wanted to take a moment to express my deep gratitude and excitement on behalf of our school community as we opened the doors to our brand-new campus yesterday. It was truly a special moment, seeing the joy and awe of the faces of both the scholars and the families as they stepped into our brand-new campus. It was honestly something I will never forget, being there for eight years. The excitement was absolutely priceless. Scholars' eyes lit up as they explored the huge classrooms, the multiple play areas, and the new cafeteria that has air conditioning and a new AV system. Yes, snaps for air conditioning. One parent said to me this morning, it feels like Christmas, and it really does. The energy of a new school year combined with the magic of a brand-new space is something you can feel all over campus. But this new campus is more than just a beautiful building. It represents a fresh start, a promise of opportunity, and a powerful investment in the future of our children, so thank you to everyone who made this possible. Your support is already having a meaningful impact, and we're just getting started. Thank you.
Good evening, I'm Terrence Gladney. I just had a couple of things. I'm the founder and director of the Terrell Christopher Gladney Memorial Academy, and I want to remind all of our school sites, as well as you all, that August 19 will be the first date where schools can enroll for the Scripps National Spelling Bee. We are the regional partner. We've committed to sponsoring at least three spellers. The cost of entry and access for our scholars at school sites is only $200, and it's a school-wide opportunity to embrace literacy and build a foundation and culture. The school sites, we've gone, in the time that we sponsor in the last two years, we've gone from two schools in the district out of 66 eligible schools to eight, and it's really just established a culture of literacy and learning on school sites. So if you guys could please share the word, and also just advocate for our scholars to have access to that, and hopefully represent our district and our region at Nationals. The other thing is, I saw this, I think this afternoon, there was a Facebook post about the, we have new EV buses, and they're celebrating sustainability and, and, you know, our green apple. But I did have some questions. Speaking of sustainability, being that we're an open enrollment district, have we ever done a cost analysis, or some sort of analysis about the number of miles driven by our families to go across town sometimes to access schools of choice? You know, the article itself talked about, you know, how traffic injustice Sacramento is, and how these EV buses are really going to alleviate some of that, but we're really just supporting and encouraging with our current model of open enrollment that kids travel to get better opportunities, at least on paper. The other thing is, the model for school sites to have access to school buses for field trips is that the school sites have to pay for those buses and the driver's time. I don't know if a cost analysis has ever been done. I believe the bus drivers are hourly. Have we ever done analysis as to whether it would be more effective to have them salaried, and then just have them accessible to our school sites to have access to field trips throughout the day with our buses that are sitting idle between drop-off time and when we pick up kindergarteners? So just something to consider. Thank you.
We have no more public comment.
Thank you very much. All right, moving on to the consent agenda. Do we have any public comment on consent agenda?
We do, yes. We do have Terrence Gladney for consent agenda.
Welcome.
Back. 8.1N is an LCAP addendum and consolidated app item. Just in terms of, you know, where we are as a district and community engagement around the LCAP and the importance of it, the, you know, the critical nature of it, I would have loved to see this as a short presentation, just to inform the public about what the LCAP means, even though it is just an addendum to the comprehensive document. The one thing I did notice is that it specifically calls out funding and allocations around LCAP goals, which is something that we as LCAP PAC members did not receive, and was told that something was beyond the scope or beyond the capacity of our district. So it was great to see this here, but I'd love to see it scoped out and expanded across the entire document while we, as a committee, are reviewing it and providing our questions to Superintendent Allen and to you of the board, so that we, as well as members of the public and all of the individual scholars and families that we represent, have a better understanding of how these dollars actually work. Again, speaking to the district's social media, there's a post about the importance of the LCAP and how it funds all these different things, but there is an information, knowledge gap from the average parent and those that are, you know, coming to board. Means if you look behind me, I'm sure I don't need to look, but I know that there's not too many families represented. But it starts with really just building a bridge of knowledge and approachability around things like this. So I'm excited that this is in the document, and that it is showing that we can call out specific funds, and I think it'll just make us better functioning as a committee, but also as a district, so thank you.
Thank you. I will entertain a motion to approve all items on our consent agenda. Moved by Member Rhodes.
Second.
Seconded by Member Navarro. Student presidential vote. Thank you. Roll call vote.
Member Jean.
Aye.
Member Cryata.
Aye.
Member Benjamin.
Aye.
Member Navarro.
Aye.
Member Rhodes.
Aye.
All right, thank you very much. Moving on to 9.1 Employee Organization Reports.
We actually do have a public comment on communications.
Oh, excellent.
Terrence? Right. District Advisory Committees?
Okay. I will call you up after we have our employee organization reports. SAC City Teachers Association.
Good evening, Vice President Jean, and members of the board and Superintendent Allen. I'm Nikki Malevsky, I'm Nikki Davis Malevsky, President of the Sacramento City Teachers Association, and, you know, the beginning of classes are still 10 days away, but it sure feels like we're off to a really busy start. Just yesterday, we kicked off a training for several of the 10 MTSS school sites, and we worked through the staffing allocations and assignments for social workers throughout the district. Meanwhile, throughout the summer, teachers were working with administrators to create hiring panels, to ensure that our schools are filled with credentialed teachers for our students as soon as school starts. So we were excited to say that Tiffany Smith Simmons informed us that we will be welcoming nearly 200 new educators to the new educator orientation on the 11th, so feel free to come by here at the Serna Center, starting at 11, uh, starting at 10, I mean, I'm sorry. Starting at nine will be the kickoff, and then SCTA will be providing lunch for the teachers at 1:00, so feel free to come by and hang out and say hi to the new teachers. In addition, we've been working with the academic office to make sure that the three pre-service days are as productive as possible. We are looking forward to approving our new contract at your next meeting, so that we can move forward with the many significant improvements that we agreed to in those negotiations. Tonight, before you, once again, is the MOU with St. Hope Public Schools, and we appreciate the recommendation of district staff to include language in the MOU that we require St. Hope to bargain in good faith with its collective bargaining representatives. As you know, SCTA has represented educators at St. Hope since 2017, and have yet to have a cooperative enough leadership at St. Hope to achieve a collective bargaining agreement, and it is long, long overdue. To give you more of an update on that, I am very proud to introduce our newly-elected second vice president of SCTA, Vanessa Kudabek. She is a teacher at Phoebe Hurst Elementary, and she's been working with St. Hope educators over the last year, and she's a former St. Hope teacher herself. So Vanessa, turn over to you.
Good evening, board members, Superintendent Allen. As part of my role as the second vice president of SCTA, I am proud to represent the dedicated, hard-working teachers of St. Hope Public Schools. St. Hope holds a special place in my story as a teacher, because back in 2018, when I first moved to Sacramento, St. Hope was the first school that I chose to work at before I came to SCUSD. I was a strong believer in their mission and was excited about the possibilities. I was so engaged and enthusiastic, I even chose to send my son to their middle school, whom many of you know as a New Tech Charter School graduate of SCUSD, class of 2025. However, like many of my colleagues at the time, I became greatly concerned about the working conditions that teachers were facing, as well as the educational conditions that students were encountering, and I decided to become active in the union. Like many St. Hope teachers that came before and after me, I finally decided to leave and took a position at a higher-paying district where I would receive more support. Eight years later, here I am again, working with educators at St. Hope, and they still don't have a contract. Throughout the years, there have been a lot of words spoken by the leaders of St. Hope about change, about collaborating, about supporting teachers, about transparency, even about making St. Hope teachers the highest-paid educators in the region. But actions speak louder than words. Last year, we came extremely close to completing contract negotiations with then-superintendent Lisa Ruda, who had a bold and optimistic vision for St. Hope. Unfortunately, after her passing, those negotiations were understandably temporarily delayed. But rather than pick up where Lisa Ruda left things, when St. Hope began to reengage a few short weeks ago, they unlawfully regressed, refusing to honor at least nine signed tentative agreements that parties had already signed off on. We hope that this backtracking will cease before we need to take additional legal action. St. Hope now has new leadership at the helm. We have an opportunity to finalize the contract and ensure St. Hope becomes a place where teachers stay and thrive. School has already started for St. Hope teachers, and today I had my first SCTA meeting with the high school and middle school teachers. I will be meeting with elementary school teachers tomorrow. In collaboration with the St. Hope educators, we created the following petition, which so far was signed by 25 educators, which represents almost 75% of middle and high school teachers. I'm going to give that to you. I'm going to read to you the petition. It's titled, "We're United at St. Hope Public Schools to Win a Fair Contract." Whereas St. Hope Public Schools has an extremely high turnover rate, and the average teacher at St. Hope has only been working there for 1.1 years, and whereas teachers at St. Hope work more, almost 500 hours more a year than SCUSD teachers, and yet are compensated at a much lower rate, and whereas the majority of teachers at St. Hope are still in the process of obtaining their credential and need more support, and whereas St. Hope teachers are extremely dedicated, hard-working, and believe their students deserve the highest quality of education possible, which includes having appropriate access to curriculum, materials, and a highly-trained educator. Be it resolved that St. Hope Public School teachers state their overwhelming support for a fair and equitable contract. In particular, we ask St. Hope to adhere to the tentative agreements that St. Hope has already agreed to in the proposed contract. Support a 5% across-the-board raise for all teachers, ending pay raises contingent on evaluations. Just as a side note, in the evaluation rubric, there are many things, including one item that requires teachers to raise money for, for St. Hope. So their, their proposal would tie that type of evaluation to their salary. Provide financial support for educators who are in the process of obtaining their credentials. Ensure that all educators have access to curriculum, materials, including technology. Ensure that teachers have the opportunity to become permanent employees after two years and are no longer subject to at-will employment. And finally, to bargain in good faith with St. Hope bargaining team, so that educators may secure a fair contract as soon as possible. We have an opportunity to put St. Hope on a constructive path going forward, but that opportunity comes with a need to put guardrails in place. Negotiating an enforceable contract with SCTA is one guardrail. The ability for the district to provide the appropriate oversight, transparency, and accountability is a guardrail. Having that oversight, transparency, and accountability, and a strong MOU between the district and St. Hope is a guard, guardrail, and a necessary one at that. Thank you for your time.
SEIU. Teamsters. NUP. All right, I believe we have public comment from Terrence for our district advisory committee Welcome back.
Thank you. At the, I believe the last meeting in June, from the dais, President Singh unfortunately isn't here, but he sort of loosely injected or uplifted something that happened in the policy committee regarding district advisory committees, and based on the criteria that were listed, having to be a parent of a current SCUSD student, and whether you loosely look at that as a parent or caretaker, living in the area that you represent on a specific committee and not being able to serve on multiple committees, I think I may be the only community member in the entire district that fits all three criteria, so you can understand if I felt targeted. One of the other individuals that serves on multiple committees alongside me is Frank DeYoung. Frank did not hear about this entire process until I gave him a phone call last night, which is why he's here tonight. He was supposed to be babysitting, but he, you know, went out of his way, as many of us do, to serve this district and make sure that we are filling areas of need. But my personal situation aside, someone like Frank, who is a graduate of SCUSD, who has been a parent of SCUSD graduates, is a current grandparent, and has served probably thousands of hours, should not have to learn with the public from the dais that there's consideration of displacing someone who has volunteered to serve in a space. When I think about what was uplifted, I ask, I guess, what was the process to come to those criteria for giving people additional voices? When I made my public comment later that meeting, I indicated that on the LCAP PAC, for example, which I'm a member of, we've been operating at 50% capacity, so displacing any of us, including Frank and myself, would mean that we, or they, would not have a quorum to do business. And LCAP is foundational to us having budgetary options. I asked, in addition to what that process looked like, are there minutes from the policy committee? Because my understanding is that that decision was also made known to some board members at the dais. So as we're talking about having better governance and transparency, I think that that is critical. At least you guys could be transparent amongst each other. When I looked at the Facebook posts that was subsequent to that meeting, that was supposed to be this, you know, widespread, you know, reach out to, to people to serve, there were six likes and five shares in a district of almost 40,000 people. The other thing is, again, like, the criteria of having to live in the area that you represent, those are trustee-appointed representation positions. We're in a district with open enrollment. Your criteria means that a parent could potentially represent a committee or a trustee area where they don't even have kids to go to school. So as I said at the meeting, it seems a little bit out of line and out of turn to not come to people that's affected, and again, myself being one that fits all three, you know, just to have a conversation, but also attend as liaisons to learn a little bit more about the way it works. I would gladly give up my seat if there was a line of people at the door to fill any of the seats that I occupy, but I do that and remove myself from time with my family and other commitments, so that I can serve this district as I have for over 15 years. So I would expect a little bit more respect for what I've invested in this district, so that when I'm gone, the ability for people to serve willingly and not be appointed to a specific position that you guys may feel is the best for them, that they have some options and flexibility to serve where their heart lies. Thank you.
We'll move on to our district advisory committee reports. Student Advisory Committee. Community Advisory Committee. Excellent, come on up. Hi.
Welcome back to school. Hope you're having a great summer. So I'm Valene Bird, I'm your chair for Community Advisory Committee this year and last year. We just wanted to give you some information on what we're planning on doing, how our year looks, what our focus is, and how you can be of assistance to us, and how we can be of assistance to you.
My name is Charles Bolden. I served as the vice chair for the last two years. In addition to what the wonderful Val said, we also want to continue to invite you all to show up to our events and to just inform you of what we're doing this year, and, and like you said, how you can be of service to, not only us, but to the families that we serve.
So our focus this year, as always, is parent engagement, but we've added district collaboration to that. We also are focused on member, membership, recruitment, and retention, also inclusive practices. So that would include the things that we have done and that we're including in what we plan on doing this year is the Then we have our Ask Sped event that we did in February, but we are moving it up to October because we feel like families need to ask questions sooner, they need to answer sooner, they need to be addressed as soon as possible so that we can, you know, keep the communication going. So the Ask Sped event will be happening in October. Then we will be making sure that we have our different workshops, we have office hours during our meeting. Right before our meeting, we have 5:00 to 6:00 o'clock with S O P A, so parent concerns can be addressed and parents can speak to someone one-on-one. And then...
I want to quickly add, just so we all know, part of our reason for being here is to alleviate some of the stress or from our staff members. We take on a lot of concerns from parents so that we can inform them of the best practices to make sure that they're not going to the Board of Education before they're talking to our staff in what we're doing.
Yes. So with that being said, we are making sure we have workshops for the parents, we're educating them as well. They will have workshops on navigating the system, the alphabet of, the alphabet soup of M T S S, S S T, 504s, I E Ps, all the acronyms you like to throw around. We want to make sure the parents know it and that we are addressing those issues of not being able to navigate special education, especially with the changes.
And one more thing we wanted to address is just the fact that we wanted to inform you all that we've had a lot of inconsistencies in the past, but this year, we were just told, as we're beginning our school year, that we will not be, we will not have access to our S O P A leader anymore. So that leaves us with no one to kind of drive or navigate S U S D, and we want to make you aware of that because it's been, this past year was so great because of the person that was assigned to us, and without them, we're not sure where we're going to go with that. So we ask that you really look into that, to provide us with that service, that person to serve in that role as we navigate the school system.
So I see our time is up, but we invite you to our meetings. We do have a new flyer. It does have all of the calendar dates on there so that you can attend and hear some of the parents and make your voices heard as well on some of the things that you know of. We are, really importantly, not trying to gatekeep. We're trying to let people know of the resources that are available to them here at SAC City. And I think that's where a lot of parents get frustrated. And I think that it would be helpful to see your faces there or for you to show up at least to one meeting per year. That would be great. Not Taylor.
Well, Taylor's always there. Can you remind us who represents this C I C on your board? April, we have not seen you yet.
We haven't seen you.
No, at all.
But we're okay. We'll switch arounds too, so, you know...
Well, we want everybody. You said...
Thank you.
Excuse me?
Sorry. Do you have flyers for us?
We do.
If you can give them to Danielle, she'll pass them to us.
Thank you, Ms. Taylor.
Well, thank you. We hope to see you this year.
And District English Learner Advisory Committee. Local Control Accountability Plan, Parent Advisory Committee, L C A P PAC. Thank you. Community Schools Advisory. Sarah Lynn. Oh, sorry, I skipped B triple A B. That's why she looked up like, what happened? My eyes, I apologize, Terrence. Black African-American Advisory Board, B triple A B. Come on up.
I think this is my last time up here, depending on what you guys say. I would like to ask you guys and everyone that's watching or everyone in attendance to think and reflect, how many black teachers have you had in your K-12 experience? Like, I know, and I counted this morning, I had seven. And I went to school in progressive Berkeley with an African-American Studies Department, and I know them by name. And I'm sure that most of you guys, depending on whatever number it is, if it's 0, 2, 3, remember them by name. And the reason that's important is because when we think about what black and African-American scholars, as well as all scholars in any school district, are experiencing, too often, our teaching ranks and our staff ranks don't reflect what our district demographics look like. So when we're being asked things like to focus on a single recommendation or a single focus for our work, it's important to know that the number of black teachers, black staff members, black adults on campuses or in the district that we have, it impacts so many of our recommendations. Climate and culture. It impacts our literacy, and it also impacts one of the things that we're focused on right now, is the implementation of an A P African-American Studies course. And even when we talk about what was uplifted in our previous resolution from Black History Month, was selected a staff to focus on, which was third-grade literacy. The third-grade literacy itself does not represent the comprehensive recommendation. That recommendation was written around elementary, middle, and high school outcomes. So even if we focus on third-grade literacy, even if we focus on A P African-American Studies, those are not comprehensive representations of the recommendations that were committed by this district to be fulfilled by 2019, within the year timeframe. So yes, we are committed to, with the support of Board Member Benjamin, as well as community partners and staff, we are committed to supporting and overseeing and helping make sure that we have a productive, positive, successful implementation of A P African-American Studies courses, specifically the one that's been adopted. But that starts at the top realm. So when we talk about our lack of black teachers, we have to understand that we have not adequately prepared our black scholars to support and accept the curriculum that shows them who they are and why they're important. More than likely, that's coming from home, it's coming from friend groups, it's coming from TV, social media. So we, as a B triple A B, as well as collectively as a district, have to do a better job of bridging the gap. We have to meet scholars much earlier, and a lot of times, that can start as simply as being more welcoming. When I saw the transformation at Serna, I understand there's security concerns and everything else. I see the black fences going around each school site. For people that have already been disenfranchised for hundreds of years in this system, that does not speak to a welcoming nature or climate. So when I speak to things like us identifying ourselves as a safe haven district and being willing and able to quickly turn around signage and language that lets pockets of our community know that they are welcome, doing the same thing for all of our scholars, including black scholars, can bridge that gap much quicker. So we look forward to following the model of what's been achieved and accomplished through some of the resolutions at this dais and some of the practices and best practices that we've adopted as a district, but helping make black children and black families whole as well. Thank you.
Thank you for your service. My name is Sarah Lynn Beanveneau, and I serve as the District Community Schools Specialist. I wanted to take a moment to share a few celebrations from our community schools' work. Tomorrow, community schools, in partnership with Trustee Rhodes, Councilmember Mai Vang, and many valued community partners, will host a free community-family back-to-school pool party at Cabrillo Pool and Bidwell Elementary to help kick off the new year. Everyone is invited to come join us as we celebrate our students, families, and our broader community. Additionally, I'd like to highlight an inspiring event that took place Tuesday at Sam Pennell Community Center, hosted by Cesar Chavez Elementary. Community School Specialist Kim Rodriguez hosted a family gathering titled "To Find a Place of Joy and Belonging." The event brought together many parents. One parent served as a presenter, one helped with the sign-in table, and another shared community resources with attendees. The presenting team included Specialist Kim Rodriguez, Tiffany On, a parent leader from Cesar Chavez, Nengali Amadazia, sorry, Nengali, that's from our multilingual department, and Elvia Vasquez from SAC ACT. As a result of this gathering, relationships were strengthened, parents stepped forward for P T O officer nominations, completed a C sit parent interest form, and participated in E L A C nominations. What was most exciting is that this event wasn't led for parents, it was led with them. Parents and community partners are stepping into leadership roles and helping shape the direction of the school. The purpose of this event was to invite families into the heart of the school community, particularly into shared leadership. This is what community schools are all about. I want to thank you for your continued support in making this work possible. And since I have one minute left, I would like to share that at the June board meeting, we saw a presentation by our Student Advisory Committee on Art School Gardens. One of the pictures highlighted what gardens should not look like at Earl Warren. So we put our community school hats on, and we found a SAC City alumni who graduated a year early that is getting his Eagle Scout project, and he is working with the district to transform Earl Warren's garden. So hopefully, this year, that will be the highlighted picture. Thank you.
American Indian Education Program Parent Committee. Okay. Moving on to 9.3, Student Member Report. Welcome, Maggie.
Thank you so much. First and foremost, talking about the Student Advisory Committee again, we will be welcoming a total of 20 representatives for the school year, which is an all-time high for us. And around the end of this month, we will be holding an orientation for those incoming members and returning representatives. And Justine Chu Griffith and I will be facilitating that a little bit more in order to garner a student-centered environment. But now that I have time, speaking of student-centered, I'd like to highlight that my hope going forward into this school year is to, like, emphasize that while I'm the one occupying the seat, I want to say that it doesn't just belong to me, but also the 40,000 other students who make up this district, as they are the very reason this room exists, and my seat at this table serves as a funnel and a bridge between us all. I'm super excited to be up here, working side by side along with you, and this opportunity to work alongside you guys is amazing, and I have confidence that this year will go smoothly with all of us. I hope to serve and support even, as even motivation for other students, to step up and step forward and use their own voice. And I'm committed to pushing for absolute change to improve students' daily lives, and I hope to cultivate more authentic youth perspective and foster a more inclusive and equitable environment for all. I'm wholeheartedly dedicated to listening, engaging, and following up with students, families, and even staff as we ensure that we are all working at our best. I'm eager and I'm thrilled for the future. Lastly, to honor Justine, she gave me really good advice coming into this school year. She pointed out something to me. She said that while there's always going to be problems, we have access to the most valuable resource to solve them, which is the thoughts, opinions, and ideas of the students and families. I'm looking forward to uplifting all the students and families, especially the underrepresented, mainly the low-income, ASO, English learning, immigrant, black, and special education students. Thank you.
Thank you. 9.4, our Superintendent's Report.
Thank you, and welcome, Maggie. Welcome, yes. All right. We are less than two weeks away now from the start of our school year district-wide. New Joseph Von Heim is already back in classrooms, and we have the Met and New Tech starting tomorrow. Also tomorrow, we have the first of our three ribbon-cutting ceremonies for our brand-new schools. Tomorrow at 10:00 a.m., I will welcome our community to celebrate us at Nicholas Elementary for a brief ceremony and a tour of the new campus. There will be food and music and entertainment for all. I am excited to welcome back our families to these new buildings. We will do it again at Cesar Chavez Elementary on Monday, August the 11th, at 5:00 p.m., and then Oak Ridge Elementary on Wednesday, August the 14th, at 4:30. These new schools are not the only facilities projects happening in our district this summer, and I want to highlight a few big improvements that our families will see when they return this year. New fencing has been installed at Abraham Lincoln. Hollywood Park is undergoing a campus renewal, and there has been extensive work in the parking lot and the front of the campus. The modernization of Bowling Green to Cone is taking place, starting with the parking lots. Modernization work is also happening at Ethel Phillips Elementary. Improved electrical systems have been installed at our historic campus at Cal Middle. New portable classrooms were installed at our former CB Wire campus that will house Pacific Elementary students while their brand-new campus is being built. Demolition has also started in the unused buildings at Fern Bacon Middle School, where we will be also building a new school over the next two years. The fields are growing nicely, growing in nicely, at John F. Kennedy High School for their softball and baseball improvement projects. There was a brand-new kitchen remodel at Luther Burbank High School as well. And finally, West Campus baseball and softball fields are complete. So really, thank you to our facilities team for their work to make these projects ready for another amazing school year, and thank you, thank you to our students and staff for their patience and pardoning our dust in some cases for these transformations. Thank you.
Thank you very much. For 9.5, President's Report, I do have two things to mention. First off, welcome back to everybody. The new school year starts in a couple of weeks, and I know some people are beginning to get excited about that, and others are enjoying their last moments before they come back. And I just, I want to give a shout-out to all of the educators who have been working hard all summer. I hope you've gotten some downtime and taken care of yourself and your family and whatnot, but we're also excited to have you come back for a new school year, and we know that you're going to bring your passion and your vision and your readiness to do that for the betterment of our students and their education. The second main thing I want to talk about is just kind of an update on our board committees. So as Terrence mentioned, we are trying to ensure that our board committees are thriving spaces with clear understanding of why they exist and what their work is. Of all of our district advisory committees, there are three specifically that have board-appointed seats, and many of those had not been appointed in years, and their seats had been expired and lack of clarity. So we were trying to clarify what we were expecting in those committee appointments, and I do apologize if the policy committee's conversation came off as a surprise. That was not our intent. I do want to announce that over the summer, everybody should have received multiple-parent square messages and social media posts about the opportunity to participate on either our Restorative Justice Committee, our Community Schools Advisory Committee, and Restorative Justice is brand-new, you'll see it's not listed yet because it has not met yet. So Community Schools Advisory and our L C A P PAC Committee. I want to announce that we have already had many applications come in, but we are still taking applications through August 22nd. Friday, August 22nd is when those will close. So if you have been thinking you would be interested in participating more and getting involved in our committees, you can go to our home page and, under latest news on our website, be able to find a really great breakdown of the intent of each of these committees and the time commitment and expectations, and be able to apply. I do want to let you know that we have yet to receive any applications for five spots. One is Restorative Justice. Area 1 has no applicants yet for Restorative Justice, so I highly recommend Area 1 get some applications in. For our Community Advisory Committee, Area 4 and Area 7 do not yet have an applicant. So for those of you in those areas, you may want to reach out and encourage people to apply for our Community Schools Advisory. And for L C A P PAC, Areas 5 and Area 7 have yet to receive any applications. So board members, if you want to reach out, you can, I believe we received an email to send a robocall if you want, you can reach out to your contacts and see if we can make sure that we have an application for every single one of our spots. And then after that date, we will receive the information of all the applications, make decisions, and then those will be announced at our September board meeting, the first board meeting in September. Okay? And I will follow up with all of you with an email for all of that, so you know what's happening. And I think that concludes my Vice President's Report. Moving on to 9.6, Information Sharing by Board Members. Does anyone have anything they'd like to share? Member Navarro.
So I just want to say, welcome back to school. 2025, 2026 school year is going to be great. I think the Superintendent and Vice President, Jean, already covered the rest, all the activity happening. I'm just, I'm claiming victory for Rosemont High School administrators during the principal's meeting, the week of July 30th at the Serna Center. Congratulations to the Rosemont High admin for winning the Spiritware 2025. to the Rosemont High Admin for winning the Spirit Ware 2025. And also, I want to welcome Maggie. Looking forward to working with you and with the rest of the Student Advisory Committee. So whenever you guys are meet, please let me know. I'd like to be there. Thank you.
Member Rhodes.
Yes, I will make mine brief. Tomorrow, we will have a family back-to-school pool party. Here it is. Here it is, right here. And so, community schools have been wonderful. We're going to have a lot of activities for the families, but also myself and Councilmember Vang has sponsored swimming for everybody in the community, so you don't have to attend one of our schools to go swimming. You just have to come to the Capillo Pool, and we have you covered. So look forward to seeing you guys tomorrow, 3 to 7. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, moving on to 10.1, an update on our Operational Memorandum of Understanding with St. Hope Public Schools. Welcome Ms. Goldman and Ms. Locker.
I know, sorry. All right, let's see. Does it work? Yes, okay. Go back. All right. Okay, hello, everybody. Happy August. Happy almost back-to-school. Ms. Leslie Locker and I are here to present to you on sort of updates regarding where we left things at the end of June and where we have gone since then. We are familiar with our core value and guiding principles. So tonight, we're going to go through a very, very brief summary of recent events. I'm going to share with you about the corrective action meetings that have begun with St. Hope, and Leslie will present some options for moving forward. Bunch of acronyms, because there's a lot of players in this game, and so that is here for you to refer to. I think the new player in the mix that I want to call out is, where it says CI at the bottom, is Charter Impact. Charter Impact is a back-office service provider that does back-office fiscal for a number of schools, and they are now contracted with St. Hope Public Schools as well. And the other one I want to call out, SHPS ECB, so in that we're talking about the Executive Committee of the Board. And as we all know, charter schools have their own boards, and their boards have committee, and so it's a long sentence, so I abbreviated it many times. So as we know, back in September of 2024, the charters for Sacramento Charter High School and Public School 7 were approved by the SUSSC Board, by UALL, with conditions. One of those conditions was to come to an agreement on an MOU that would outline the details of a corrective action plan. We worked through that all year. In the spring, we had a series of drafts that went back and forth and got approved in different ways. On June 26th, UALL approved a version of the MOU, and then the following Monday, on June 30th, St. Hope Executive Committee of the Board approved a different version of the MOU. So as a result, as of July 1, we did not have a version of the MOU that was approved by both governing bodies, meaning at that time, the conditions of the renewal were not yet fully met. Regardless of the status of the MOU, we felt it was important to start moving forward with the corrective action work that we had been planning since the renewal. And so I have started meeting monthly with the leadership at St. Hope. Those meetings happen monthly. As I said, each month, we have a very specific schedule with areas we're going to look at, documents we're going to review. They have to submit the documents in advance, and then I will provide the Board with a written summary following that meeting each month. So our July meeting, I would say, was very productive. St. Hope provided me materials in a timely manner. Our conversation was open and honest. We had very clear conversation. The focus of the conversation was really around the St. Hope Public School contracts with these other entities that provide services, because that is really the biggest question I think we all still have in the MOU. And what I would say is that what we see is that as St. Hope had told us, they have greatly reduced the amount of those contracts over the last couple of years, and the 25-26 contracts are reduced further still. We are waiting documents from St. Hope Academy and St. Hope Development Company, because St. Hope Public Schools doesn't necessarily have those to give to us. And that's something that we sort of need to address in the MOU as well, because we can request information from one of our authorized schools. We can't necessarily request information in the same way from other bodies. And what I would say, just to generalize this first meeting, is I think the picture is becoming more clear. It is coming into focus. But, you know, it's not crystal clear yet. We still have work to do, and this is the first of several meetings, and I think we can continue to move forward in that work. In a moment, I'm going to hand things off to Leslie, and she's going to go through some options. And what I just want to emphasize, that our hope here tonight is to get direction to move us into doing the work, right? These corrective action meetings, in my belief, is where we will gather the information, is where we will reforge relationships, and it's really where we can monitor the operations and the outcomes of this organization. And so what you will see tonight, is I've actually put forward recommendations. I don't usually do that. I really like it to be all your, you know, you are the deciders. They are just recommendations. You can still decide. But what we have recommended is the way that we think we're going to get to the doing the thorough, detailed work the fastest. And so with that, I'm going to hand it over to Leslie.
Good evening, Superintendent, members of the Board. Thank you for having me. So let's see if I can operate this here. Whoop. Too far. Going back. Sorry about that. So the question is, how far apart are we? And we're referencing, of course, the MOU that was approved by the Board on June 26 versus the version that was approved by the Executive Committee to St. Hope Public Schools. And the answer is, we're not that far apart. However, there is one big nagging issue, and then a few smaller issues that we feel we need to get to. And with regard to this main sticking point, it's concerning the fiscal relationship among the St. Hope Public Schools and its affiliated entities. So that's going to be the St. Hope Academy, St. Hope Development Center, and then, of course, the Charter Impact, new relationship that they created via the RFP process. And so really, we're looking at those details. We have provided for you in your Board Packet, a comparison chart that is going to really show the distinctions between the two sets of language that were proposed in the version that the Board approved versus the version that was approved by the Executive Committee, and whether either our spaces that the Board feels comfortable in terms of the language, or if we want to go back to the drawing board and try to further work through those details. The smaller issues to clarify really surround guidance on legal counsel and legal counsel's involvement and any investigations of complaints involving St. Hope Public Schools, or whether we need to have a clean line of separation. Also, we understand that there was some confusion among community members at the last Board Meeting regarding the district's role as it relates to collective bargaining by the charter school. And because the charter school has its own certified collective bargaining agent, it is required to bargain in good faith. However, the district is not going to be in the place of dictating what that relationship looks like. Of course, if there is a violation of the law, a violation of the charter, that would give the district board jurisdiction to step in pursuant to its oversight authority. However, it's not going to get involved in the day-to-day as it relates to the actual collective bargaining element, as I shared. And then the final piece here is the approval of the MOU by the St. Hope Public School Executive Board versus the full Board. And I can share with you that I have had conversations with the charter school's legal counsel and made clear that we expect that any final version of an MOU is going to go before the fully constituted St. Hope Public Schools Board of Directors, because this involves the charter school. It's a soup-to-nuts document, and we think that it is more appropriately placed before the fully constituted Board, as opposed to a select number that would comprise that executive committee. So we wanted to present the options that are available to the Board. The first option would be to approve the MOU that was revised by St. Hope Public Schools at their meeting. Let me move right through this. But we wanted to present some considerations for the Board, and that the Board should only select this option if it feels strongly that any perceived or real conflicts regarding the contracts between and among these entities have been effectively resolved. And our opinion and staff's opinion is that we're just not there yet. There's more work to be done. There's more issues to clarify, and there have been improvements in transparency and in the relationship between the parties and bookkeeping, but we still feel that we need to see a longer track record established before we get to that point. So then, you'll see, we jumped to Option 3, but this is intentional, and this is really trying to bookend, you know, the various options that would be available to the Board. And the Option 3 is to take it or leave it. This is where we say, nope, the version that was approved by the district's Board on June 26th is the version that stands. And this is the version that the Board should select if it feels that the parties cannot find a middle ground. If there's no more language that it feels that is mutually agreeable between the parties that can be worked out through another version or iteration of the MOU. And again, I have had conversations with counsel for St. Hope Public Schools, and it is apparent to me that that is not the intention, that they are willing to come back to the table to work out some additional language. And I think it is important to underscore that if the Board were to go this direction, it's not going to get the corrective work done. The corrective work is going to be really with Amanda Goldman and her team in working through those monthly meetings and the check-ins and the doc reviews. That's where, you know, all the work is really resting, and there would be the guardrails still put up in those MOUs to be able to accomplish those goals. So this is the version that staff, surprise, surprise, is recommending, which is our Option 2. And this would be an opportunity for district staff to meet and confer with the St. Hope Public Schools team on a best and final offer. And that would be with the understanding that the district's Board would approve the MOU at a subsequent meeting. We know there's been a lot of back and forth. We feel that there needs to be a stopping point, and so this would be a very serious conversation in terms of getting to the final language for those terms that are still under review. If the best and final offer is approved by the Board, it would go to St. Hope Public Schools Board of Directors for consideration. If that's approved, then the renewal conditions will have been met, and the corrective action response and oversight meetings would continue with Dr. Goldman and her team. If not, that would be the option for the Board to consider other potential more formal measures, which could include up to the initiation of revocation proceedings. We do want to share that one option that is available to the Board is for the Board President to appoint a representative to participate in that meet-and-confer opportunity if it so desires. That is certainly within the Board's purview and discretion to do so. And we really think that this Option 2, again, the reason why it was placed last, is going to give us the best chance of doing the work, the corrective action work and the oversight of the charter school that's going to minimize these additional costs that would be a tenant to going down a more formal path to compel some level of compliance. And I do want to underscore, lastly, that this is still keeping the options on the table. So if for some reason, this Option 2 were unsuccessful, we still have the Board-approved version that went forward on the 26th for consideration. We still have the version that St. Hope Public Schools Executive Committee approved as well. And that could be something that is discussed at the next meeting. And the next slide is just providing a side-by-side of the three options for your reference, and I'm going to turn it back over to Amanda for some final remarks, because I've clearly exceeded my time.
I'm just going to say thank you in advance for processing all of this information, and we welcome your questions and comments.
Thank you very much. Do we have any public comment?
We do have one speaker. We have Alicia Ferguson Parsons.
Welcome.
Hi, good evening. Good evening, SUSSC Board members, Superintendent Allen, I'm going to make sure this goes a little higher, and then also committee members and SUSSD staff. So again, my name is Alicia Ferguson Parsons. I'm the current interim Superintendent for St. Hope Public Schools. I'm very excited to be back before you tonight, because like Amanda and Leslie just said, we are not that far apart, and we want to be able to work together to find an MOU and have an MOU that works for both of us, provides oversight that is necessary, and also allows us to continue to operate as St. Hope Public Schools. We actually also just started school yesterday, so it's been very exciting. We were able to welcome kids back, and honestly, it was just a great day all the way around. We had a welcoming tunnel for our high schoolers, as well as our brand-new campus for our elementary school, and it went off without a hitch. So we're very, very excited for where we are going this year and the work that we are able to do and continue to do with all of you. As Amanda said, we have also already had the first of our monthly meetings, so that happened in July. All the documents that were requested were not only provided to Amanda on time, but actually early. That is something that we are committed to continuing to do into August. One of the things that I'm very excited about is that in August, you will also be receiving all of the accurate and correct information regarding retention of teachers, as well as credentialing of our teachers, because I feel like it is consistently depicted incorrectly. And so I want to make sure you have those accurate numbers, and you will actually have them with this August submission, which I'm really excited about. Finally, one really exciting thing, we have our own ribbon cutting. I know everyone else is talking about ribbon cutting. I've actually already emailed all of you, and thank you, Member Kaota, for already RSVPing, but we are having our ribbon cutting of the PS7 Elementary Campus on August 27th, the Wednesday, at 9:00 a.m., and we'd love to have you. So please come, join us. You're welcome on our campuses anytime at all. Whether you'd like to tour, just hang out, get some information, see our kids and our staff in action. We would love to have you. We want to collaborate with you. We are very close. Like, let's get it over the finish line, so we can focus on our kids. Thank you.
Thank you. Any Board comment? Board discussion? Member Navarro.
So I just have questions, actually, about the analysis, but would it be too much trouble for you to go over that?
No, I can...
Is that okay with everybody? That'd be great.
So I'm going to go just back a minute, because I think it's easy to see on here as well, if anybody isn't looking directly at the Board Packet. Oops, that was the one. So the analysis that is in the Board Packet, it basically calls out four sections of the MOU that we're looking at. And so the main one, the first one, is the language that looks at how we look at the relationship between St. Hope Public Schools, St. Hope Academy, and St. Hope Development Company. As a charter authorizer, we don't necessarily, we don't have any authority over these other entities. But the fiscally entwined relationship puts us in a position to sort of ask some questions about it. So anything that we want to get in terms of the understanding of that relationship, we do sort of have to document here, because otherwise, it's sort of at the discretion of the parties. And I think the real question is, you know, what level are we comfortable with, knowing that we don't authorize these other entities, right? Like, what do we need to see to feel comfortable with the way public school dollars are being spent? Did I get it? The second section on there, now we go into like those smaller issues. The second section is related to the collective bargaining language, and this came up on June 26th, and Tara Jean asked a great question, and she said, okay, well, but if they have to follow the law. And yes, they have to follow the law, and that doesn't change anything here. But there are lots of things in an MOU that are, you have to follow the law, but we uplift them in the MOU anyway, just to make it really, really double-clear. And so that's really all we're saying there, is we feel the need, just suggests that we add in language that just, yep, you got to follow the law. The third section is around legal counsel. So and it is also related to this Public Schools-Academy Development Corporation relationship. Our understanding at this point is that the legal counsel that does basically legal counsel for the school as well, and I don't have all of this information yet, because that's at the next corrective action meeting, but our understanding is that there are some relationships there that feel like not the best in terms of the ability to complete investigations in a way that feels appropriate. And so we feel like we need more discussion and more information on that. And then the last one is related, it's just about complaint and investigation, and we had written in language about what standard of investigation we expect from St. Hope Public Schools, and we're kind of just going back and forth on the wording of that, that we need to be clear on. Did I summarize that pretty well?
I think so.
Okay.
Any others? Member Navarro.
Okay.
Thank you for this very informative presentation as well as recommendations. So I think it's important for me to make some comments here because, you know, I pulled this from consent agenda towards the end of last year for a number of reasons. And I've had time to think about this situation very well. And I understand very, very clearly, right, the report or the board communication that we got around what the legal, or like what the boundaries are, right? Like where there is no gray area and that's just it. But in light of the ongoing discussions, and I also want to preface this with saying, this work began before I was even part of this board, right? But here I am. And when I swore in, when I took this seat, the very first thing that I did was go to the leaders of the district, to the superintendent, and I said, I work for a nonprofit that we work with here in this district. And there may be a point in time where I have to make a vote that I want to be sure will not be conflict of interest. That wasn't hard for me because it was clear to me in my role that I have to be accountable to the constituents, not only the ones that voted for me, not only the ones in my area, but overall. So with that said, I just want us to take a moment as a board to really reflect on the moral implications of our actions. While it's true that legal guidelines does prevent us from pursuing certain paths in this situation, what is the essence of a mission that we are trying to transcend here when we talk about the confinements of the law? When I think about, and it's not hard, we all have access to the internet. When we look up Kevin Heinsteins name, I hope I said his name correctly, good things don't come up. Now, that doesn't mean that today there's active things happening, but it does mean that morally, who are we allowing to represent us as a district or as a community or as a school? And then also the other name, and I know that this was mentioned, I think somewhere earlier, was around the contracts with Cassandra Jennings. And in the same sense, there's great work to be done and it can continue to be done without having such connection and ties to the things that the very constituents are reaching out to us and letting us know that they're not comfortable with. And so it is my, I cannot not say anything, which is why I'm bringing this stuff up. And it is uncomfortable conversations to have, but they have to be had because I hear that collaboration is something that St. Hope wishes to have with us. But it also feels like some of the actions that have been taken don't demonstrate that. And I'll say one of them was, there was a Sacramento Bee article that went out recently. That was a prime, like you had a moment to tell the community, we want to make things right. We want to make sure that we are being transparent. This is what we're doing. And when you read it, it sounds like advertisement for the school, which is fine, but that conflicts with what I'm being told when we're having conversations around wanting to be collaborative. So to me, it's fundamentally important that we act in accordance with what is also morally right, even in the absence of legal counsel. Our commitment to ethical principles should guide our decision-making and it should always steer our actions. And therefore I ask the leaders here on the board and also those at St. Hope, what is the message that we truly are trying to communicate to the community at large? Because really, this is just about transparency and accountability. Every decision that we make, every course of action that we pursue is sending a message. So it's our duty that we ensure that the message is one of integrity. We have to have accountability and there has to be genuine concern for the well-being of those we serve. And that includes the interactions that you have with your staff, whether that be through their union or through them directly. As we move forward, I request that we can strive to align our actions with our values of who we want to be as a board and also who we want to be as an entity that serves our students in Oak Park as St. Hope. It is crucial for us to reinforce our dedication to our ethical practices. Again, we don't always have to go back to the language that confines us because of the law. My message should be clear here, again, even though we have these limited constraints because of the legal constraints, where's our moral compass is really my message here. Like, we owe it to ourselves, we owe it to our teachers, we owe it to our students. So really, like my last, my closing comments here is how are we going to align all of that? How do we align our morals and our ethics in a way that reflects, yes, we are coming together, yes, we are being collaborative, yes, we are sending a message together? Not SUSD sending one message, St. Hope sending another message and any other partner send, but together collaboratively, how are we going to get the work done? And so when I look at this, I agree with the recommendations of option two and I'm just going to end my comments with that.
Thank you. Member Caillada.
Okay, so just a few quick notes to hopefully provide some direction for our team, but also the other team here that's in the room. So first of all, I really, really want to thank Amanda and Leslie, our council, for really such diligent work in this matter. I think sometimes you want to, collaboration's easier kind of when you have side conversations, but sometimes it's really necessary to do the full collaboration here in the spotlight, right in public, so that we can learn as a community what we really want to do. And as people have come to me after hearing these meetings and seeing this go back and forth over these past couple of months, it's allowed the community to take ownership over this in a way that I think has actually been very helpful. And I hope that the family will feel the same way, that this is helping people understand what we're looking for. So I will say, you know, when the St. Hope Board did not adopt our MOU that we passed last time, I was disappointed because I do think that the version we had was fair. But I also understand, as Superintendent Ferguson Parsons mentioned, that this is really about our collaboration. There's the short-term picture really, I mean, it's a really big picture, it's important, but it's getting over the immediate hump of what we need to address. But the real big picture here is that we're going to be educating these kids together as an oversight agency and as a school, as a charter school. And it's important to build that relationship. So that to me is really more important. Of course, with that said, there are some things that are very important that we make sure we get handled in the short term as well. On that note, speaking of the collaboration, I did want to thank Superintendent Ferguson Parsons and Jim Schiavel for meeting with me a couple of times now so that I could understand what their perspective is so that when I'm coming here, I really do understand the full context of what I'm saying, how it will be interpreted by their team to make sure that we, again, are pursuing that collaboration. And ultimately, this does feel kind of rough at times, but I think at the end of the day, and my hope is that we are actually building a better relationship between our two entities than we've ever had since their charter was created. And I think that really is our true goal here and I think that will best serve the students who go there, their families, the Oak Park community and our whole Sacramento region. So I do agree with the slide you had up a little bit ago. I think we are close based on the documents I'm seeing come across. And I will not go into all the detail I did last time we talked about this. I think, you know, at this point, we understand kind of, at least I've shared my positions. I think the rest of the board has really put their feelings out there. But I will say, I do fully sign on to the analysis. I think you all have really understood what this board has been asking and through us, what our community has been asking us to ask from you. So I really do think, again, agreeing with Member Ibarra, we've got to go with option two, following this plan of action, basically. And yeah, I guess I will just close by saying, you know, this is about doing the work, but we're doing it for a really good reason and it's to make sure that we're giving the kids the best education they deserve. And we are an oversight agency and it seems like we're trying to, in some ways, I guess, take control over the school, to put it in a weird way. I wish I hadn't said that out loud because there's a better way to say that. But it feels like we're kind of coming in in a way we haven't in the past, but I really don't think that's what we're doing. I think what we're doing is we are stepping fully into our role as representatives of the community that goes to the school because we are the public elected body that represents them, even though their kids are going to a charter school. They are residents of Sacramento by and large, who we would, who we do represent. And it is important that we provide that oversight in our role as representing them and making sure that their kids get the best education. So I am looking forward to getting a MOU that we will have some back-and-forth conversations among the St. Hope team and our staff here and council and bring back, hopefully sooner than later, because I think we really need to kind of, I'm not going to ask for a deadline, but I think we need to get this, is it urgency to this at this point? But looking forward to seeing it and looking forward to the conversations you all can
I did have one question back on slide seven, actually a couple. So looking at the three questions there, how much can do we dictate about the relationships when it comes to the fiscal considerations? And then what documentation can we review? And I can understand we've got the, okay, our relationship is with St. Hope Public Schools, but they are contracting out. And in my mind, any documentation that any education institution is required to make public then should be public to us. So that's just a no-brainer in my mind. And then as we get through the MOU and figure out what, how do we best oversee to ensure that the fiscal choices and actions and behaviors are really in line with their charter and with the requirements of law without the conflict of interest is super important. So I just, I appreciated that you're asking that question and wanted to say, in my mind, the no-brainer is if it's meant to be public, then it's meant to be public and there should be no between the two. Thank you for the clarifications on the bargaining in good faith and exactly what those lines are, especially since we're working with SCTA in both of those, wanting that clarification. I really appreciated that, like, our focus is the violation of law or charter. So wanting to make sure that the charter that we've already agreed to, but the MOU that's coming into place, how do we make sure that those are super clear to all of us? The one actual question I had is the last bullet point here on approval by the executive committee of the board or the full board. Does the executive committee have to meet in public or are their meetings private? Do we know?
They're public.
Okay.
They have to follow the Brown Act as well.
They have to follow the Blaine-Ronan Act as well, okay. And so basically what we would be asking is the full board needs to oversee it because it's a commitment of everything. But then if executive committee is having conversation, they would be required to follow the same documentation of agenda in minutes and that we would have access to those, those would be made public, just so that there's full transparency in the decision-making process. Okay, great. And then yes, I do believe the full board, it's, I know we have a lot of conversations about decision-making amongst seven of us and it's important that the full board be a part of decision-making. So I think that is all I had to say.
Could I just speak to one point regarding what can be addressed through oversight versus what needs to be called out in the MOU? So I think it goes without saying, anything that the authorizer is legally allowed to do doesn't have to necessarily be articulated in the MOU. The MOU, as I shared before, is that two-way street. It makes it very clear what the relationship is of the parties, operationally, administratively, et cetera. Districts as chartering authorities have the right to make reasonable increase of the charter school, especially as it relates to their fiscal condition, and the charter school has to respond. And so not only do they have to comply with, for example, the Public Records Act, they also have to respond to reasonable increase of the district to the extent that that is within the purview of the board as oversight agency. So it's almost like a heightened access to records beyond what the Public Records Act would otherwise require, if that's helpful.
Yes, thank you. That's why, at first I was like, anything public? And then I went, but there's heightened, right? Because we have a special working relationship.
Like, for example, as the oversight agency, you would have a legitimate educational interest in the students attending the charter school. So for purposes of FERPA, while maybe a member of the public wouldn't have access to certain information because of potential privacy rights, the district may.
Okay. Thank you for that. I will get right to you. And then I just wanted to emphasize, I think Member Caillada said it too, I really appreciate the summary and the analysis that was provided here and definitely love that statement of language around collective bargaining and particularly the EERA and FERB, just to make it very clear that those are expected parts of the bargaining process. And Member Ibarra has a question.
I have one more question. How is St. Hope Public Schools Board selected? We are vote, we are, the reason I ask this is I know we are voted right into the seat, but like when it comes to, and it doesn't have to be, just charter in general, how do we make decision?
So charter in general, it's going to be whatever's in their bylaws and whatever's in their charter. I cannot, I do not have all 16 charters memorized, but I'm fairly certain it's by appointment. I got a thumbs up. Okay, by appointment.
All right. If there's no further discussion, I will entertain a motion. Member Caillada.
So I would move that we direct staff to proceed with option two and use the MOU version C, link two in the agenda packet, as the starting point for further negotiations with St. Hope.
Before I ask for a second, I have been provided beautiful language in case we did choose option two. So if you would like, I will read that language aloud and see if Member Caillada would be considered a friendly addition or shift. I would like to make a motion for district staff and legal counsel to meet and confer with representatives of St. Hope Public Schools for the development of a best and final offer on the operational MOU. For the purposes of the meet and confer with St. Hope Public Schools as the board vice president, and I have spoken with Member Singh about this as well, I would be authorized, so the board president would be authorized to appoint a member of the board, of this board, to participate with district staff and legal counsel. Following the meet and confer process, district staff would bring back the revised MOU at a subsequent meeting to be approved on the consent agenda and considered as the last, best, and final version. The approved MOU would be sent for consideration and approval by the full St. Hope Public School Board of Directors.
So I would accept that. I just had a question. Is the person to sit on that being recommended now or is that something President?
Since President Singh is not here, we are unfortunately delaying that process. But I do know that there's, yep, that will be coming shortly.
Okay, well, I would accept that amendment.
Thank you. Do we have a second on the language? Thank you, Member Ibarra. So officially moved by Member Caillada and seconded by Member Ibarra. Member Benjamin, did you have a comment question? Are you just voting?
I'm going to thank everybody. I think I'm encouraged. Still new here. The, we're not far at all. I think, I think, you know, this is tough. So I was taught that growth comes through discomfort, right? And, you know, sometimes these are discomfort, but I want to say that, you know, it's important that we keep the students, right, and what the students' needs are in front of all this, right? We talk about muddy waters and gray areas and things of that nature, but I think we all benefit from clarity. And so we want to make sure, I think we, as a board, we vowed, right, to put these, put our kids first and make sure that all our kids are served. And that's why, you know, we made those recommendations to put in those guardrails because, you know, I think the guardrails provide guidance, right? And then we can all speak towards where we're going. And so I'm encouraged by the fact that we're close. So that's all coming up there.
Thank you. With that, we'll move to voting, starting with our student preferential.
Aye.
And our roll call vote, please.
Member Jean.
Aye.
Member Caillada.
Aye.
Member Benjamin.
Aye.
Member Navarro.
Aye.
Member Rhodes.
Aye.
Member Ibarra.
Aye.
Thank you all. Moving on to 11.1, public hearing for the SCUSD SULPA Local Plan Contracts, Annual Budget Plan, and Annual Service Plan. Welcome, Mr. Lenares.
Thank you. All right. All right, good evening, everyone. Vice President Jean, members of the board and SUSD community, my name is Giovanni Lenares and I serve as SUSD SULPA Director. I am here this evening to discuss Sections D and E as well as Section A, which is contacts of the SULPA Local Plan and to highlight some of the great work of our CAC. So to start us off, always want to provide some acronym help when it comes to special education in particular. We have lots of acronyms in special education. So here is a breakdown of some of those that we'll be using this evening. So here is a breakdown of some of those that we'll be using this evening. As mentioned, we will spend some time this evening speaking to specific sections of the local plan. Specifically, we'll discuss the annual budget and the annual service plan in greater depth. As background, I would share that all Selpas are required to submit a local plan to C D E. The purpose of the local plan is to ensure access to, ensure that students with disabilities have access to special education services, outline the manner in which the Selpa uses federal, state, and local funds to implement special education services, and maintain compliance with federal and state regulations. More simply, all this means is that all students are general education students first. Services are designed to support students within their least restrictive environments to the maximum extent possible, based on that student's specific eligibility and disability. So that particular purpose here, and more simply putting it when it comes to L R E and a focus on inclusive learning environments, has been a focus of our community advisory committee this past year. The commitment to foster inclusive learning environments goes deeper than just our local plan. Our C A C has accomplished a lot over the last year to support a strong focus on inclusive learning and collaboration. This has included providing professional learning opportunities, forums in collaboration with different departments in the organization, like our bullying forum that we held with student hearing and placement. There was collaboration with the Black Pearl School Board and the Black Pearl School Board Action Plan around policy review and development. There have been a number of family events. Obviously, in this slide, you'll see some of the things that many of you participated in. One thing that I would particularly like to highlight is the development of a special education parent handbook. The C A C spent a lot of time this year in this, in the creation of this document. It is very interactive. It's got lots of different sections. It's got note sections. It's got things to expect at your first I E P, things to expect, questions to ask, lots of really great information here. We just got it translated. There's a digital version. We're working on a plan to communicate it out to, throughout the districts to provide copies to families at their first I E Ps. So they've put a lot of time and effort into this, and I will share that having the opportunity to work in a number of different systems, seeing something like this is unique, seeing something with this level of quality is exceptional, and seeing our C A C's commitments to ensure that everyone has access to it is really kind of what they've been about. So I just wanted to highlight some of those things because it definitely highlights the manner in which they go about their work. So in here, I just identified some other things, the bullying forums, the holiday mixer, I know that they spoke about that earlier today, the Ask SPED event, which was a great event in which families felt really supported in being able to have firsthand access and an opportunity to get their specific questions answered for how to navigate the system, how to better understand special education, where to get answers. So as we move into then what is in this document, right? It is a, a very sort of legal document with just a number of things that you fill out. We start off with Section A, which is about Selpa and L E A contact information, and then budget and assurances certifications. Then we go into Section D, which is our annual budget plan, which is required to detail expected expenditures and funding sources. That takes us then into, here are some of the specifics of our annual budget plan. We get about $52.6 million in projected federal and state revenues, and then 70% of our, of the Selpa annual budget plan comes from our local contribution. As has been shared in the past, and I do not believe it's, it would be a surprise or new information to anyone on this board, is that local contribution, not only in our Selpa, but across the state, makes up the majority of how special education is funded, which is also why the, the C A C, as well as myself and anybody who works in special education, like to emphasize that students with disabilities are students, general education students first. The special education services are a supplement to their general education experience. So the idea that we're funding all of special education based off of federal or state funds is not realistic, and it shouldn't be what we would be striving for anyway. So this breaks down further where our revenue comes from. Most of our revenue comes from our A B six oh two state funding, as well as our I D E A federal grants. We also receive specific mental health funding. Now, when it comes to expenditures, as you can see, salaries and benefits make up the largest part of our budget. Ensuring that we have highly qualified teachers and credentialed staff in place is obviously a priority for our district, so that's where we put our investment. Services and supplies are also budgeted to supply daily operations and instructional needs. So now we go into the annual service plan. This section outlines the types of services we provide across the district. It is aligned with our CalPads reporting system that categorize special education supports. This allows us to monitor what services students receive and where. Here's kind of a breakdown of what that kind of looks like in the annual service plan itself, as well as the descriptions of what different services are. If there's a need to proactively look at the number of positions, like was mentioned in public comment, like S L Ps, to ensure that we are working with labor partners to ensure alignment with our collective bargaining agreements, as well as the local plan, we will absolutely do that. So thank you for your continued commitment and support to ensure that every student within S U S D has the opportunity to have meaningful education, support, and an opportunity to have their education in the least restrictive environment. And I welcome any questions or thoughts. On time, yes.
Nicely done. Do we have any public comment?
We do not.
All right. So I believe that officially closes the public hearing. And we'll move on to board discussion. Do we have any board discussion questions, comments? All right. Oh, there you are. Sorry. Member Kayata.
I wasn't sure.
I stopped looking at the screen. I was just looking at you guys.
Okay, so I've got to just talk about the C A C a little bit, but before I get there, just wanted to ask you one question. So we did have a public comment earlier about a question about the caseload. Do you have any information you could provide to us in response to that public comment? I think you were here when she gave it.
Correct, yeah. I, hopefully, I probably rushed through it. But what, yes, in the Selpa Local Plan, we identified that caseloads should be within the caseload maximum number of 55. One of the things that I did just even after hearing the public comment was Becky and I are constantly texting throughout the day as we're looking at that, is to say like, hey, do we need to look at numbers? Because obviously, it's not only an ed code piece and our local plan piece, but it's also in our collective bargaining agreement. So if we identify that there's a need for us to look at that and look at positions and caseloads, we'll absolutely do that.
Okay, yeah, I just wanted to make sure I give a little sunlight to that question because caseloads do matter, especially in special education. I mean, they matter everywhere in education, but it just seems like especially here, you know, we really need to make sure we're giving our instructors and aides the capacity to help our kids. All right, so turning to the C A C, I think I am coming up on my 60th anniversary of being an active participant and/or member of the C A C, so just kind of wanted to highlight some of the questions I have around that part of your presentation. So first and foremost, when the C A C gave their report to us earlier tonight, they talked about kind of a concern about not getting district support. I know that Member Ibarra and I have talked to Ms. Bryant about this, so I was wondering if we could just address that. We are continuing to still fully support the C A C. And I say this as someone who was C A C secretary, as you know, at a time when I also felt unsupported. So I want to make sure that we're not going backwards and that we're on record confirming that.
Correct. We're going to fully support the C A C. It may not just be a single person providing support to C A C. There was another thing that Becky and I talked about was the C A C just this week had their planning session for the year. So they came up with different topics for what they want to discuss throughout the year. And so what we've been looking at is as leaders within the department, who can best support them based off of that topic? If there's a particular topic that I can speak more to or that Becky can speak more to, we'll align our support systems to ensure that we're giving them the maximum amount of support related to that topic and not, maybe not necessarily a particular person consistently throughout the year.
Okay. And of course, this goes out to anyone on the C A C, whether they're, you know, one of their board members or whether they are a participant, you know, my phone, my email is always open, so if someone feels like they're not getting something handled, you know, we'll make sure we handle that. And so you have that new guide, which looks amazing, and I need to read that because I haven't seen it yet. And we have this one for our site leaders. So I think it would also help to get something for our teachers. I know that's something that we do through training, that's something a little more quick and dirty, and it wouldn't have to be as full as this, but I think that's also another part of that I E P team that often, you know, we think our instructors know everything, but they don't. They also need to learn. And if there's a new disability coming before them, they need to know who to ask, who can they turn to, you know, who's the support they can get. So just, that would be something I would think would be nice as well to make sure that we have everyone who goes to the I E P meeting fully prepared to advocate for the interests of the students that need that support. And then finally, I guess I have kind of a request, and this would be more on the district side and not on, I'm not asking for something from the C A C itself, but from the district who supports the C A C, is the C A C is an amazing place for parents, guardians, community members to learn about disabilities, to walk through their own struggles, to emphasize with each other, to express their anger, which is really actually one of the most important parts, and it was for me, to be with people who also feel frustrated. But the name C A C is advisory, and at the end of the day, that's a core component of what they have to do to be a community space, but also what they're talking about should be coming back to this board, that should be advising us. And I think that that should be a district role to make sure we capture that advice. So if there are trends that we are noting out of the C A C, you know, as Val mentioned, I do go to most of the meetings whenever I can, but I don't think it should be expected that all seven of us are going to the meetings. We should be able to get the information that they're sharing presented to us, whether that's, you know, through a board communication here and there, or included in the updates when you or Becky come before us for special ed related issues. So that'd be my last ask, but yeah, thank you.
All right. I did have one kind of comment I wanted to make and one question if we want to go back to slide 12. Thank you for the breakdown of where the contributions for special education do come from. It is the, 2025 is the 50 year anniversary of the passing of the I D E A bill. And in that passing 50 years ago, the federal government promised that they would, committed that they would provide 40% of that funding, and then the states and locals would be asked to make up the additional 60%. I want to emphasize that right now that funding is 6.13%. That is 33 and some change less than they ever promised. I also want to emphasize that about two, three years ago, it was at 17%, which is, I believe, the highest it ever was. They never came close to 40%. So I just, I want to emphasize yet again the challenges we face as a board and as a district, that we are required to provide services without being given the resources we need to be able to do that. And I want to give it, just an incredible shout out to our incredible educators who work so diligently and so hard every day to make sure this happens, regardless of the funding that's coming in or not. And then I appreciated slide 13. I'm just trying to understand the revenue here, the 52 million doesn't line up with anything on slide 12. So I was just trying to figure out what is, how do slide 13 and 12 talk to each other?
So in slide 12, rows one and two make up about 52 million.
Perfect.
And so that breakdown of that 52 million is slide 13.
So it's getting more specific as to where the state and federal funding is actually coming from to get to the 52 million, and then we are providing the 124 million and some change above.
Yes.
Okay? Thank you for that clarification. That's very helpful. With that, I will take a motion. Are we approving the Selpa? I will take a motion to approve the Selpa. Thank you, Member Ibarra. And a second? I can second. Does Member Benjamin want to?
I'll second.
Awesome. Member Benjamin, I'll second it. Just got to make sure everyone's names are on all the things, right? And with that, I will go to the student preferential vote.
Aye.
Thank you. And our roll call vote?
Member Jean.
Aye.
Member Kayata.
Aye.
Member Benjamin.
Aye.
Member Navarro.
Aye.
Member Rhodes.
Aye.
And Member Ibarra.
Aye.
Thank you so much. All right. Give me a second because I closed my agenda, and I know we have a couple more things. Oh, we have received information. Woo-hoo. Our next meeting is September 4th, right here, 5:00 PM closed, 6:00 PM open, and then September 18th. Welcome back all, and we'll see you next month.